Person of the X-16 Cooperative School Board. We'll begin tonight by introducing our board and our administration. We'll start at this end with Mr. Soffen, please.
I had given some questions, sir.
Mic's not working.
Melissa Leshner-Bradman.
Good evening, Board of Pardons, Kansas City. Travis Thompson from Stratum.
Bill Volker from Exeter.
Ken Meyer from Exeter.
Malcolm McNeil from East Kingston.
I'm David Ryan, Superintendent.
Our building administrators.
Mike Monahan, Principal of High School.
Good evening, Patty Wong, Principal of Walkerup Little School.
Sharon Wilson, Principal of Seacoast School of Technology.
Michelle Lewis, Director of Exeter Denton.
And do I see you administrators?
Molly O'Keefe, the Director of Finance and Operations.
Michelle R, Assistant Director of Finance and Operations.
Helen Reese, Director of Student Services.
Good evening, Ellen Liska, Assistant Director of Student Services.
Renee Bennett, Incoming Director of Student Services.
Thank you so much. Before we begin our formal meeting tonight, I would like to make just a couple of comments and share some thoughts with you before we start our public input. I've served on this board for 10 years and have lived in this community for 25 years. I will say that what happened at last night's meeting saddened me greatly and to a large extent, to say that I was brought to tears would be an understatement because I feel that as a community that we are better than that. That is not really the art. This past year has been an absolute nightmare for so many people. 600,000 lives lost, including my own family, I might add, two members of my family dying within hours of one another last May. Families are facing destitution because of unemployment and financial issues. Schools across the entire nation, including our own, were affected by this. And it's needless to say that we are all devastated for all of these people. And now, as we come out of this nightmare and try to move forward in the spirit of cooperation, we've been dealing with a number of issues that we never dreamed we would be dealing with. Threats of harm to school board members and their families are ongoing. Administrative systems in our school buildings having to answer telephone calls from people across the country that were filled with hate, language that I will not repeat here this evening, faculty members being unfairly attacked, and board members being brought to tears. At the same time, we have received today an overwhelming number of emails and messages from people across this district who have been giving us a great deal of support. That is not to say that the concerns that were raised last night are invalid, they certainly are. But the concern of the folks who were contacting us were more concerned about the tone of the meeting than anything else, and I think you would all appreciate that. Have we made decisions over the past year and in recent weeks that some would not agree with? Yes. At the same time, are there investigative measures in place as we speak to look into these concerns? Absolutely. Because the concerns that you raised last night are concerns that we share as well, and we're here to listen to you. We do represent those who disagree with us. At the same time, we also represent every man, woman, and child who live in this district, those who do agree with us. And that's something that we all have to understand as we go through this meeting this evening. My husband and I are retired educators, over 30 years, myself and the same for him. And one of the things that we have learned from our students is that not only do we teach them, they teach us. And I'd like to make reference to an amazing experience that I and some of my fellow board members had this past Saturday, and that was the graduation of the Exeter High School class of 2021. I had the honor of presenting to each kid, over 300 of them, their diplomas that day. The joy on their faces, the smile on their faces as they received that diploma were just indescribable. It was the culminating activity of a heartfelt year for them. The speeches that these youngsters presented on Saturday, the commencement speeches, were filled with pretty much the same general themes. The joy in their accomplishment, the pride that they had that they accomplished all that they did despite the obstacles that they faced. Gratitude to those who helped them get to the point where they were on Saturday. And the one word that pretty well traversed all of these speeches was kindness. They kept talking about kindness to others even if they disagreed with you. And the other point that they kept making was to go out into the world and move forward beyond the issues that they had had to deal with. I thought it was, again, students and young people setting an example for us as adults. So I'm going to ask you tonight to follow their lead. Speak in a respectful manner. Anyone who wishes to speak tonight, who are able to figure, and we'll talk about that in just a moment, will have an opportunity. We are not the enemy. People on the stage are not the enemy. We all have a common goal. We may have disagreed on how to get to that goal, but our number one concern, our number one priority, as it always has been, are our children and our students. So I thank you for listening to me before we begin the meeting. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Joyce. I just wanted to thank again our crowd who came last evening to share their questions and their concerns. We certainly have taken all of those questions into consideration. We're going to compile them with any questions that are asked this evening. We'll be putting them into our Frequently Asked Question Document that will be up on our website. Balance Score Card presentation that we gave last evening is on our website as well. If you go to the homepage of sa16.org, on the right side of the masthead, you'll find Balance Score Card and a link that brings you to that page. So we look forward to hearing concerns and questions this evening. Again, we'll be answering questions via Frequently Asked Question because we have several people who have the same question, most likely from tonight and last night.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. So if I could just set some guidelines for you, I see I've received a list of the folks who would like to speak tonight. We normally have public input in recent several months at the end of the meeting and we limited it to 20 minutes or so. We moved it to the early part of the meeting tonight, and we'll be doing that, by the way, in the future, to accommodate folks who want to be able to speak at the game, who may need to leave, who have small children that they need to address, so that's the reason for that. We will also be limiting the public input to one hour tonight for the reason that we have a fairly lengthy agenda because of business part of our meeting that we need to get to, a lot of important decisions that are going to affect all of you that need to be made tonight. So that is the reason for the limitation. We're going to ask each speaker, just as per our policy here in SAU 16, to speak for three minutes. I would also ask, this is totally your call, but if you did speak last night and you are able to allow someone else to speak, I'm not saying that you have to do that, I'm just asking if you would like to do that. If not, that's perfectly fine as well. So. We have further ado. We have a microphone in the back, and I believe the first person on our list is Bill Ball from Exeter.
Steve, we'll need that mic made hot, please.
Thank you. So it took me 43 years to do that. I'm here tonight because I love the SAU 16 community. I don't like them, I love them. I love everything about this community. I've been here, I was up there 44th year on July 1st. And we are a community that is one, that comes together all the time. Everyone here is, everyone is here because of the concern for our students. Awesome crowd, people that care, people that care. Everybody cares about our kids. They're our future, they're everything to us, everything. Nothing's more precious than our children. Tonight, I think, is an opportunity to come together, to discuss in a respectful manner our concerns. It's okay to disagree. That's okay. I was talking to some people today in this school, and in my mind tonight, this is a teachable moment for all of us, not some, all of us. Teach our young people how we can discuss things and get better. No different than the practice field out there, no different this guy behind you that I haven't seen in 28 years, practicing the old high school. Get better, all of us. We are all Blue Locks. We take a great sense of pride in our community. Parents, educators, administrators, students, school board members have sacrificed a great deal. I've seen it firsthand. There's a saying that I use all the time, I remember back in the 90s, may sacrifice your ally. And I say that tonight to everyone, may sacrifice your ally and present ourselves tonight with a great deal of Blue Lock pride and a green to be respectful to the day. Thank you.
We have Emily Heath from Exeter. Good evening, Emily.
Good evening to you, thank you. My name is Emily Heath. I'm a local resident here in Exeter. I'm also a pastor of the church here in Exeter, the Congregational Church. I'm very fortunate to have neighbors and friends and lots of kids in our youth group and our church who grew up in the SAU. I'm very grateful for all of them. I came tonight, it's supposed to be a Bible study, but I came because I think it's important to show our love for our neighbors. And I wanted to talk tonight about what it means to be a neighbor here in Exeter. I heard last night a lot of folks were talking about being a patriot, and that strikes me because I'm a 13th generation Breant supporter, my family fought in the American Revolution, and they've kept on fighting and serving in the military, in the fire departments, in law enforcement. Patriotism and love and service go very, very far in my family. And so whenever I hear folks talking about it, I perk up and listen. I also believe, I don't believe my faith should be something that everyone else has to believe in, but I believe strongly in my faith. And my faith tells me two things. One is to love my neighbor as myself, and the other is to tell the truth. My family's quite patriotic, yet nothing about their sacrifices may less so by telling the truth about history. There are times that our country has done incredible and wonderful times, things, and there are times that we have missed the mark. Being honest about that, saying we could have done it better, that's what it means to get better. In my faith, we believe that if you mess up, you say so, you learn from it, and you try to be better. When we teach history to our kids, that's what we're telling them. We don't always get it right, but we try to get better. History is not history if it's not the full story. History is not history if it's told only so that it impacts, if only one side is told. I see someone up here holding a sign that says "No Nazis," and I would agree. My dad was in the house when... My dad was in the house when his aunt got the telegram saying the Nazis had killed her husband. And my father still suffers every day from the effects of Agent Orange. Like I said, this is very deep in my family. And all of them would tell you that there is no threat to our country by telling the truth. There is no threat to our country by telling the truth. I want to close with this. It has been an incredibly hard year. I am so grateful to you all for doing your best to keep folks safe during COVID. Thank you so much. None of us knew what the next step was. We have to just kind of keep trying to get it right. None of us said it couldn't be right, we tried, and I know that you all did too. The one thing I want our kids to learn is that character matters, kindness matters, empathy matters, welcoming your neighbor matters. If they don't get that, they're not going to get any of the rest of it. So I want you to hear from a neighbor, someone who lives right here in SAU 16, that I am grateful for you and I am thankful for you. And I know many of your neighbors are also here tonight, folks that live and work here in Exeter and the surrounding towns, to tell you the exact same thing. Thank you all.
The next person on my list is Mr. James Goodwin. Mr. Goodwin, I'm not sure what town you're from, sir, if you could just let us know what town you're from? Thank you, sir.
You know, what really saddened me is how our students were treated and the decisions that were made. You can all hear and have an adult conversation, and this is ridiculous. You all need to be held accountable for the actions that you made, your decisions. You know why the parents are angry? Is we work hard, five days a week, some of us six at one, we fight to raise our kids, fight to make them run, and then we come home and we hear all the stuff that our kids say, and you broke the trust, you broke the trust between the parents and the school. You broke it, and that's why they gotta come down. Stop it, you and Ryan, you're gonna go off, there's no excuse. I'm sorry, Bill, but let me finish, please.
All right.
Okay, let's talk about history. My mother graduated from this high school in 1963. My sister graduated from Exeter High School in 1983, and I graduated from here in 1993. And never in the history of this school have we seen anything like this to treat our students that way, yet it'd be a damn disaster.
Not yours.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Lois DeYoung from Brentwood.
I have a budget question for Dr. Ryan. Dr. Ryan, with about, I think, 4.2 million, give or take a penny, money surplus, are you going to return that to our towns? Are you going to spend that money up just so we don't get it back from the taxpayers, to the taxpayers?
Well, Lois, I think we're normally not answering questions, but I will tell you that that is on the agenda for tonight's meeting, the discussion on that. The board will be deciding on this evening. Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Padavarami from Stratum, followed by Patty Surratt.
Hi, Helen, how are you?
Hi, Pat, how are you doing today?
I, uh, those me who read the suggestion to have the on-deck circle here.
I think that's a great idea.
Right, thank you. So, I got a lot of letters and emails, I'm saying right, Padavarami from Stratum. And usually I divide myself. I spend time in Concord, I rely on my school boards to do their job. But I must say, in the last couple of weeks, I got more emails than calls about the prom and about the blue line issue and other things. I felt compelled to come to last night's meeting and to this meeting tonight. Well, I walked away from last night saying, all is not well at SAU 16. And my wish is that all of you, and I think Helen, you were trying to say the tone, to listen, please listen to what all these folks have to say, because there were a lot of good arguments last night on a lot of the issues. And the issues were quite diverse, from lack of transparency to the prom, to critical race theory, to the middle school blue line flag incident, to the school reopening, how that was handled, to the overwhelming desire of those there last night to have schools, the children not wearing masks. There were a lot of smart people that got up last night. I know it was, it was quite the scene, I agree, but I think there was a lot of pent-up frustration, having Zoom meetings, and we all understand what happened, and this is the first public meeting where people were present. But there were a lot of great arguments about health issues, about whatever that were brought up in that meeting that I think the board, the various boards should pay attention to. So I want to talk about four things quickly. First, I asked last night about, I'm a high Travis, too.
Pat, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to let you know that you probably have another meeting and a half left, I'm so sorry.
Okay, I'll be quiet. So, I'm trying to understand, let's use the masculine shoe. Who makes that decision about the mask? I was confused last night about, we have to go to each board to, where do these folks go to have their report about the mask? Do we have to go to each board? Is it a local decision, and each school, the Stratum Memorial School, make that decision about masks? Or is it the administration level? Or which board approves the new mask policy? Can you answer that, please?
Dr. Ryan is writing all of these questions down busy.
You can't answer that?
He is going to be posting the answers to these questions on...
We want to hear an answer right now. Answer right now. Look, I'm 73 years old, and I've been in the House Committee here, so I've done a lot of boards. That's not usually the way companies work. Answer it now. You worked the last, answer it now. So the second thing I want to talk about is the, and I think she's here tonight, the mother of the son who was taken out of class because he wore the blue line flag.
That was disgusting.
Absolutely. I don't think I saw her here tonight. And she made a heartfelt plea because she is not getting anybody to listen to her, she feels, from the district or from the boards. Now, if I was a school board member, and Helen knows this, because there was an incident a bunch of years ago where I went to bat for somebody in this district that was being bullied, and I went to the Department of Education in Concord, and eventually we had a meeting with you and the principal Morgan, I mean, the principal then and superintendent Morgan, and we resolved the issue. But I hope that you school members, when someone calls you, have the same passion to help solve a problem like that. And what I heard last night is that no one seems to be, you know, the teacher wasn't punished. I mean, the reality of the situation was, he was wearing the blue, at first the policy was wear any flag you want, my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and he wore a blue, uh, blue line flag. But there were others that you could say, well, maybe that was political. But guess what? There weren't a political science flags there. So, I mean, to pick on one student, to take them out of class, and then when he gets in the principal's office, told, they don't know why he's here, and make this child miss a whole day, so now, hopefully this is being investigated, hopefully there's an apology that's going to come to the parents and the student, obviously. And I'm sure everybody in this room is going to want it all.
Pat, I'm sorry if I don't, I really apologize.
All right, I apologize to them.
No, no, don't apologize.
No, I went on to speak as well, so I have other things to say, but all this is going to say in a short.
And we're happy to hear from you further on this, please feel free to contact us, that's not a problem. Thank you.
No, I do, I'm actually going to ask for a meeting with Superintendent Ryan, yourself, others. I think we can talk about that.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Patty Surratt, I live in Exeter. I am the mom of an upcoming sixth and eighth grader at CMS. For full transparency, I also serve in the Exeter Elementary School Board. You know, this has been the most challenging of times for all of our kids and all of the parents, as well as every school board member in this room tonight and last night. And everyone in our leadership office at the SAU. I know everyone has had a different experience throughout this pandemic, but I wanted to be here to thank you for doing your best. Thank you for giving my children the best possible education, and especially thank you for putting public safety and the safety of the thousands of students in this district, and by extension, family members first, during this pandemic that has killed millions of people globally. Furthermore, I am involved in the DEIJ committee that began in Exeter, I'm really proud of that work. I'm involved because I believe in equity and inclusion for every learner in our schools, no matter...
What about the kids that, what about the kids that's wrong? What about the kids that's wrong?
So thank you to this board for approving the DEIJ coordinator. It was approved by a landslide. And I know it may not seem like it based on what happened last night, but a large majority of this community supports this work.
All right, excuse me, I'd like to interject here for a moment. I'm asking you to please let Patty finish her comments, and then you watch and then speak.
Lastly, I would note that people choosing to serve our public school board would use their elite platform, which provides them a direct line to our superintendent's office to help get answers for their community instead of drumming up drama and creating more work for everyone in this room and every other school board in this district.
They don't want you to drum your comments. Because our school does drama.
If I need clarity of answers from the superintendent's office, I may need to get them within 24 hours or less. within twenty-four hours or less. You roll over for your boss and ask him for help. We are supposed to be part of the solution, not a distraction from the important work that still needs to be done for our students. Thank you.
You're a distraction.